Sue, are you there? We'll come back soon. Mary?
Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Rob?
Rob Shaddell from Hebron.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Goodwin, Hebron.
Lori?
Lori Blake, Andover.
Sue?
Sue Stoffey from Marlboro.
Thanks, Sue. Are there any other board members that I've missed that are here? Okay, I'm Stephanie Bancroft from Andover and our student rep?
Dana Shumalaski, Marlboro.
Thank you, Dana. All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comments? No public comments? Are there any other board members?
Jessica just joined, Stephanie.
Okay, great. Okay, numbers five, six, add, delete agenda items. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? No, moving on. Student representative reports, Dana?
Hi, so right about now is crazy college season for us seniors, so there's some anxiety about that. I think there's also, I've been sensing some anxiety regarding the current situation and school being open, even though we do have a few cases. I know I've heard from some people that they think schools should be closed for two weeks, or we, some people think that we should be not open in the capacity we are with the certain cases that are happening. I think the one thing that students really have appreciated lately is that we were actually emailed last week, I think, when school was closing on Thursday, because prior to that, students hadn't fully been in the loop with emails about what was going on. So I think a lot of people appreciated that. What else? I know right now we are in the process of finding a second person to join me here, so I'm not all alone. But other than that, I think things are going pretty well. I think everybody has adjusted to the only being in school two days of the week. So it's, for the most part, I'd say things are going pretty well.
Dana, something interesting with the college searches is two of my daughters are in college now, and Kyle Nelson helped my daughter Gabrielle choose Bentley, and Gabby is now giving Bentley tours. So, you know, that's something I can reach out and let guidance counselors know. And then Alex Helene helped my other daughter Izzy choose her college WPI. So it's just something, the Ram grads have been so gracious and welcoming. It's when you said that, it's just something, and it really helps to show the good, the bad, you know, just all the different parts.
Definitely. My English teacher has a thing on like her bulletin board in the back of the room, which is basically just a bunch of different schools that she has students who went to.
Oh, nice.
She has like emails and phone numbers for, for anybody who wants to get in contact with them. So there's definitely a lot of people who went to Ram who have been very helpful during this, and I have talked to multiple people, so it is definitely nice.
Well, I think especially, the reason I mentioned it more this year, because you talked about lockdown and it's such a tricky year. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, moving on to Board of Ed Chair Report, introduction of new board member. Welcome to Mary Kuchewski from Marlboro for joining our board. We're so happy to have you. Mary is Scott Flear's replacement, and Mary, pretty soon we'll be putting you on some subcommittees and getting you busy. So, welcome aboard. We're really thrilled to have you. Update on the superintendent's search. The brochure, hiring brochure has been created, and the hiring timeline has been set. It was shared with board members earlier. January 8th will be the close of applications and interviews start in January, and there'll be more information on that coming out soon. I'll be contacting Joe Arardi to find out how communication with communities and staff and all that is going to be happening before then, so. And that is about it for that. So Scott, report of the superintendent?
Sure. Well, actually, Dana, you did a great introduction for me. I, you know, I think one of the things that we need to do at these meetings is, you know, for me to give everyone an update on how our hybrid model is going and what our thoughts are moving forward. So I'm actually going to share my screen, and I've got some slides that I'm going to use to walk us through just to, because it does have some numbers and all of that good stuff, so, okay. I trust everyone can see presentation? So, I would say that I think Dana did a really nice job of summing up how a lot of people are feeling. I think that there's a lot of students, a lot of parents, a lot of teachers that we hear from who are very glad to be in the building and happy that we're in it as much as we are at this point, but there certainly is still a high degree of anxiety that, you know, we are also trying to be sensitive to and make sure that we address issues aligned with those. So, let me just share some, what I'd like to share some of the numbers that I think are kind of creating the, some of the strategies that we've been putting into place, and then what I'll get to is kind of how is our current hybrid model doing? And what are our thoughts moving forward? So, I think these numbers tell you a lot about the state of how people are feeling. So when, for the middle school, when we started the school year, we had 41 students who chose to engage with school being fully distant. So these are 41 students who are not entering the building at all during the week and are instead accessing all of their learning outside of the building. Currently, that number is up to 61, so that equates to about 15% of our middle school is choosing distance learning, and we definitely see that this is true of the high school as well, but we definitely see a bit of a spike after we share information with the community regarding any positive cases that we might have had. So, you know, obviously, people, even though, you know, we may be able to assure them that the student or staff member who is positive would have had no contact with their child, we still have families that are choosing to move their students into full distance learning. At the high school, we started off the year with 65 students choosing distance learning. Currently, as of today, we have 111, so that's about 12% of our students are choosing distance learning at this point. If you, if you go way, way back, when we first did the surveys over the summer, the first survey, when we asked parents, are you planning on sending your child to school or keeping them home, we were up to about 25% of the student body indicated that they were going to be learning from home. So these numbers, although, you know, they're significant, are not as high as the ones that we first looked at. Certainly, one of the challenges that we all have in working in a pandemic is that we do have a number of teachers who, for a variety of reasons, puts them into either an FMLA category or an Americans with Disabilities category that would allow them to, essentially, if they chose to, take a leave and not be in the building, and it may be due to a pre-existing condition, it may be due to, you know, something unique to that individual. What we've been doing is for those teachers that are still able to teach, those teachers are teaching from home. So rather than having to replace those teachers, and quite frankly, in the current climate, would probably be impossible to do, or finding a substitute for those classes, we do have a number of teachers that are teaching remotely. So in the middle school, currently, we have four teachers teaching remotely, and at the high school, we have 10, about 10 teachers, teaching remotely from home. Just to complicate the mix, on any given day, these numbers vary from day to day, so this is just a snapshot. We do have staff members and students who are quarantined, and these aren't, so like, so for example, as of today, the middle school has two teachers that are quarantined, the high school has three, and on any given day between the middle and the high school, we may be sending or notifying two to three students that they need to quarantine. These are not students or teachers that are testing positive for COVID. These are teachers or students who most likely have been in close contact with an individual who did test positive, but the vast majority, if not all of these, are due to contact outside of the school building. So that they're either coming in contact with a family member who's tested positive, a friend, a relative who's tested positive. So these numbers change on a day-to-day basis. Basically, if you, if you come in contact with an individual who has tested positive, then you're obligated to quarantine for 14 days. So, at any given time, we might have, these numbers, we may have more, we might have a little less. Some of you may remember, we did have a situation where one of our athletic teams needed to quarantine. So, you know, we had a significant number of students during that period that were being quarantined. And to make life just a little more interesting, in a typical year, we have probably 25 to 30 substitutes between the middle and the high school. Right now, we currently have about 12 substitute teachers, although they are not all available five days per week. So, today, this, I'll use the high school as a snapshot on this one. Today, we had two classes without substitutes, and there was one day last year where we had seven classes without substitutes. What that requires us to do, obviously, is find other options, and so we may use paraprofessionals, we might put more than one class into a larger area, like the cafeteria, for example, or the media center. During normal times, that's really, it's not preferable, but it's not that difficult to do, because you're not worried about congestion and putting classes together. With the requirement to keep everybody physically distant, this can be quite the challenge. And so the fact that we have, you know, teachers that are teaching from home, which is, I think, at the end of the day, a very good thing, because our students still have access, ready access to those teachers. Teachers that are being quarantined, as we head into flu season and cold season, we know we're going to have more folks out, but unfortunately, we don't have the substitutes that allow us to easily cover for those classes. I know I've said this a number of times in the past, and I think I speak for every superintendent in the state at this point on this one. You know, it's likely not COVID that's going to be shutting us down. It may very well be just staffing and not having enough substitutes to cover on any one given day. If we look at, you know, what are other schools doing across the state and in the areas? I'm sure that some of you have seen that there are a number of elementary schools that either started with full attendance or have gone back to full attendance. However, at this point, most middle and high schools across the state are still using the hybrid model, only because for middle and high school students, the challenge of cohorting, meaning that you limit the number of students that any one student may have contact with, is really almost impossible. Most schools that are closing, you know, if you may look at any number of the media outlets, the current, some of the TV news stations, they'll, you know, highlight those schools that have closed, you know, that we closed one day last week. Most schools that are closing, they're closing for one day, maybe up to a week, to facilitate contact tracing. And, you know, I know Dana, you mentioned, you know, there are people that feel like, well, we should, you know, we should be closing simply to, you know, kind of make sure that it's out of the building and to eliminate any chance of anyone contacting it. When we do our contact tracing, we work very closely with the Chatham Health District, and, you know, unless we believe that we can all safely be in the building, we certainly would close. We've been fortunate, and again, I think the hybrid model has really helped us here in that most of the students who test positive may not have been in the building for a week, maybe over a week. So that's really helped us with students only being in the building one, two days a week. What we are starting to see, though, as the cases, the number of COVID cases do increase in the state and our region, we are seeing some schools that are closing, not for contact tracing, but to eliminate any chance of spread. Wyndham and Griswold Schools are probably the most recent ones that have announced closures. Some districts are still moving to a full return models, East Hampton, Portland, probably the most recent ones in our areas, where other school districts that were planning on returning to full opening have postponed those plans, West Hartford being an example of that. As we look at our own area, and I have some numbers in the next slide for our own areas, as our numbers increase, we did have one of our local health districts that was considering a recommendation to one of the area schools to move from their current full return model to a hybrid model due to the increase in local COVID cases. And I just heard about this one today. Although I've been asked this question a number of times, but there is one district that's working with their local, the doctors within their town and their health district to consider closing for two weeks after Thanksgiving to, and mostly because of the concern that there'll be so many family gatherings. And I understand the logic to that. We have had a number of cases where Ram students were exposed to siblings, your college-age siblings, who were back in the house and tested positive. So I'm not suggesting that right now for Ram, but that is, you know, at least one district is looking at, and it'll be interesting to see if we see any more going down that road. If we look at the numbers locally, there is a a grid that is updated every weekday at 4 o'clock, and today's numbers haven't changed since Friday. Hebron is at 6.8. This is the rate per 100,000 people. Obviously, Hebron, Andover, Marlboro don't have 100,000 people, so this is calculating out, but Hebron is at 6.8, Marlboro is at 2.2, and Andover is at 4.4. If we look at the the advice from the Department of Health and the Department of Ed, if a school is, and if you could look at the very top under yellow, if you're between five and nine cases, between 100,000, again, Hebron is the highest at 6.8. For schools, they're suggesting that you move activities outdoors when possible, and that you enforce the safety measures such as mask wearing and the types of things that we're all doing. It's when a area moves above 10 cases and you move into the orange range that you're asked to maximize spacing. That's when, if a district isn't already in a hybrid model, they would likely be suggested to go into a hybrid model. And then if you have more than 15 cases per 1,000, 100,000, that's when you're in the red zone and you'd be asked to consider full distance learning. So, you know, as we look at our own numbers, certainly, some of the towns to the east of us are well above 10, but, you know, we're all kind of at least approaching that area, if not there. So, you know, ultimately, I think we all share the same goal of returning all of our students to a full return model. Right now, I think our hybrid model has been extremely beneficial in that it's provided us with the ability to maximize social distancing, which we would not be able to do with the full return. It's allowed us to do contact tracing without having to close school, other than that one day. And the only reason we really ended up doing it on that one day is because we learned about the positive tests so late in the evening or the afternoon, we didn't have time to do a thorough contact tracing. And I think just as important, it maximizes our ability to ensure that every class is covered with appropriate supervision as we struggle with the challenge of not having enough subs, or having many fewer subs than we typically do. You know, so my feeling right now is that rather than setting a target date where we'd be looking to implement a full return, I think we need to continue to monitor the trends. We're working with the towns, we're working with Chatham Health, and look at, not only the numbers, but the, you know, where are the numbers going? What is the trend? Is the trend moving upward? Is it moving downward? And certainly, as we move into the fall and winter, the predictions are certainly that the numbers will increase. So my stance right now is that we're in a good place. We're able to keep our kids, if they want to be in school, we're able to get them in school. If they want to do the distance, we're able to meet their needs there. But I do think that we're probably in a sweet spot in terms of keeping our students safe, while at the same time providing them with options for getting in the building, so. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Scott, just a question regarding who's doing all the contact tracing, because that's a lot of work. And I certainly want to just shout out to the nurses, the admin, or whoever's doing that, because that's a whole, that distracts from everything else you're doing when you're doing all of that. So I know that takes you away from what you thought you were going to do that day.
Yeah, yeah, we've, and our admin team and our nurses have been doing a spectacular job of that. And, you know, I have to, again, I have to give a shout out to Chatham Health, because they do, they kind of mirror what we've been doing. So, you know, they're making direct contact with at least the individuals that are testing positive, and they're doing a lot of additional contact as well. So between our admin team, our nurses, and Chatham Health, it's a team effort, that's for sure.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the subsituation is a concern, I'm sure, for you and for the administrators at the building level. It's not, it's not just a concern regarding safety, but it's also a concern regarding what students are going to be able to access if you're, you know, at the last minute pulling people to cover. So I certainly appreciate your efforts. I think things are going well for you guys, and, you know, I know there's some concern from the community regarding where is Ram going? And, you know, I appreciate you looking into this and providing some information, you know, for the community about that. I think so much of it depends on the moment.
Right.
And the cases, you know, that are coming in, it's really hard to say, we're going to start this day. Or, you know, there's just so many things, variables, that you don't have control of, but I appreciate the efforts that you guys are making doing all of this.
Right, thank you.
Lori, you had typed in the question about, did you see that, Scott? Whether you were going to continue distance learning if you opened up fully?
Yes, so if we opened up fully and students still chose to participate via distance learning, that certainly would still be an option for those students.
Any other questions? No? Okay, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Scott. Consent agenda, approval of minutes for September 1st, 2020. It's enclosure 10.1. In the minutes, it said with public comments that a letter is attached from Sue's statement, but I I don't see the letter in the packet, so I just want to make sure that is included. Are there any other comments about minutes?
Stephanie, with the clerical error at the end, just because the line name, it's number 15, executive session, it says Kathleen Goodwin, it's a compound word, Goodwin. If they could just put that in there.
Stephanie, which meeting were you talking about, September 21st? Yes. The regular meeting, September 21st. Kathleen, I'm not sure I got that whole thing that you said. You broke up a little bit.
I'm sorry, it's just number 15. It says Kathleen Good made a motion to move to executive session. It's just my name.
All right, I see it. Okay, so we've got Kathleen's correction and the letter. And Judy, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
All right, and do, let's go on to personnel actions, and then we'll vote on both. There's one letter for a request for leave of absence. Scott, do you want to talk about that?
This is for one of our teachers who is asking, requesting a extension following maternity leave. So this would be a for, I believe it's for unpaid leave, following her maternity leave. So she is asking, yeah, she is asking, she's, the baby's due in December. Due to medical reasons, though, she's having the baby early, and so she is asking for additional time. For January 4th through January 22nd.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Scott about that? Or discussion? Okay, so it looks like we need to make a motion, let's make two separate motions on, one on the minutes and then one on the the leave of absence. Does anyone want to make a motion that the Regional School District 8 Board of Education approved a leave of absence for Katie Duncan commencing approximately January 4th, 2021, and running through January 22nd, 2021?
So who?
That motion.
Rob, is that a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, I will go down the list. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so motion passes unanimously. Okay, and approval of minutes with the corrections of the letter and Kathleen's name. Anyone want to accept the minutes?
Rob will make the motion to accept the minutes.
Seconded, Kathleen.
Okay, go down the list for the vote. Judy?
Well, I want to know, so we're in discussion now, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, we should be in discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to know, will the letter be sent to us, or how will we receive this letter?
We can, we could have it sent to you, or we could put it in as corrected minutes in the next meeting?
Well, I'm fine if you correct the minutes, but I would like it sent to me. Is that possible?
I believe so.
To the whole board, I mean. To the whole board, I mean. If it's part of the record, it should be, it's FOI-able.
Okay.
I'm a yes, thank you, but I don't know if we're still in discussion, but yes.
All right, is there any other discussion on that before we move on? No, okay, so Judy's a yes. Mary?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here last month.
Okay, Sue?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, motion passed. Okay, moving on to old business, DOT update.
So we, I don't have a lot of updates at this point. We are meeting actually tomorrow with Andy Tierney and Tom Fenton along with representatives from Luke and BB. We have, the project for the most part is complete. We did in our final walkthrough and the punch list identify a number of items that we asked that they revisit. So for example, one of the sidewalk, the new sidewalk areas leading from the parent drop off towards the high school main entrance, the slope exceeded the slope allowed under ADA, so we had them demolish that and redo that. We had some concerns with the the bus exit leaving onto Wall Street and they've, they're going to retool that with a different traffic pattern as opposed to actually doing any type of demolition work. The signs were, I'm sure many of you have noticed this, were way too small to be easily read by anyone in a car, so that the signs will be replaced. So we're still waiting for them to complete those tasks. They're also, unfortunately, due to COVID and some of the manufacturing issues, the the blinking signs for the crosswalk on Wall Street has been delayed. So we are still waiting for some of those last tasks to be completed. And Andy Tierney, I've got to do a shout out for Andy. He has really been invaluable in helping us maneuver through this and has been a real source of knowledge, obviously having been through some of these projects. He's brought a lot to the table. And we are still working with Luke's and BB to see what the payment may be for some of these additional items, so we're still working through those. So, good news is the project as a whole is complete and working fantastically well. The traffic backups at the bus area have been eliminated. We do have some challenging moments at the parent drop off entrance on Wall Street. But that's, I think, mostly due to the fact that we have so many more parents dropping students off. So I think without the additional, that kind of winding road through the campus, we would, we would have been in pretty bad shape at this point. Right now, it's certainly manageable. So I think the good news is, is that the design has been effective and working well. Again, we're really wrapping up kind of last minute items at this point. So we're meeting again tomorrow and I hope to have more to share with the board by the end of the week.
Any questions for Scott? Okay, moving on to new business, 12.1 modification to the 2021 school calendar.
Okay, I am going to, again, share my screen. And and what I want to look at is we, with our hybrid model, we have we have noticed some challenges to the our coordination of calendars with surrounding towns. So this is the calendar that was approved. And there are some modifications I'm going to suggest that we make. All related to COVID, so that these weren't necessarily items that we could have predicted when the calendar was approved in, I think it was August. One of the major modifications we'd like to make, and when I say we, I'm speaking for our department coordinators, our teaching staff, certainly many of our students, is because of our hybrid model, it does not lend itself well to our traditional midterm and final exams. These are typically the last four days of the first semester and the last four days of the school year. They're half days. We run two exams each day. There are a number of reasons why these really aren't compatible with our current hybrid model. One, we're already stretching what we can do and what we can fit in by chopping up the week as much as we are. To try to schedule two hour exams into our current schedule, we'd have to, it would take us weeks to take what typically takes four days. Plus, with the challenge to instructional time, the feeling amongst staff is that that time would be much more productively used for instruction. And doesn't mean that teachers won't be able to administer end of course assessments, it's just that we would, we would do them differently. And what we're asking to do is to eliminate the midterm and final exams and then repurpose that time as instructional time. So, one of the changes would be to take the four half days on January 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th, which are currently scheduled for midterms, as well as the last four days of the school year, June 11th, 14th, 15th, and 16th, and convert those into full school days. That's one piece of the puzzle. This is actually kind of a convoluted story, so please bear with me on this. So if we just did that, we'd still be left with one challenge in that we have a memo of agreement with the Ram teachers that because we added a number of years ago, evening parent conferences, we have an agreement that allows our teachers to leave early, or not early, but after the school day ends on what are typically our mid-year days. So the, in this case, it would be January 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th. So when school gets out at 11:45, they would be able to leave early in as a trade off to coming in for additional afternoon evenings for parent conferences. So we'd have to figure out a solution for that. But I have a solution for that because we have another challenge. And on the second calendar, we've circled some days that are not circled on the approved calendar. These are early release days that Andover and Marlboro have scheduled. They're early release days for them for their parent conferences. If we were under a normal schedule, there wouldn't be a problem because they'd be dismissing at 1 o'clock for their early releases. We'd be dismissing at 2:10 and there'd be no issue with having the buses take care of both the elementary and the high school runs. The, with our current schedule, the hybrid schedule, it means that we do have a conflict on those three days, November 5th, November 19th, and November 20th, in that we're getting out at 1 o'clock and the elementary schools get out at 1 o'clock as well. So the second part of my request would be to convert November 5th, November 19th, and November 20th to early release days. And as I mentioned earlier, in lieu of providing teachers with the opportunity to leave at the end of the school day on what would have been our midterm exams, we would allow them to do so on those three days. And then to tie it in, we would also, we're going to continue to schedule parent teacher conferences. We're starting to get those schedules up and running. But we would move it from two days to one day and move it from, typically, we would go from three to five or five to seven, and this year we would go from four, four to seven. So it's a, basically, I have, my two requests would be to convert our currently scheduled midterm and final exam days to full school days. And then convert November 5th, 19th, and 20th to early release days. Those are, that's what the board would need to act upon in this case.
Okay, so Scott, you're looking for a motion from us, correct?
Correct. Because since the board approves the calendar, this is something that you guys need to do.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have one, Stephanie. Will you be sending this out to the parents and letting them know? How is the communication to the parents going to look?
Great question, Sue. We would start that. If this gets approved, we would begin that process tomorrow and send the new calendar out to all parents. And then, you know, each week, we would send a reminder that the schedule has been modified on these days.
Scott, do you, this motion, would you like it to state the exact dates and changes? Or do you want to just say modified calendar? You want to, so you want to say adjusted calendar of shifting?
I think I think if a motion, if there is a motion to convert our midterm and final exam days to full school days and convert November 5th, November 19th, and November 20th to early release days, that would cover it all.
I'll make a motion to convert midterm and final exam to full days. Also, convert November 5th, 19th, and 20th to early release days.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Scott, you mentioned that there wouldn't be midterms or finals. Would teachers still be giving some type of assessment? Is that what they're thinking? So would kids still have to kind of prepare the same way or?
You know, it would, it would really, it's going to look different depending on the course that the students are taking and it's going to look very different. We're not going to be looking at two hour exams that students typically would be cramming for. So if a teacher chooses to do an end of course exam, then yes. But, but it's still going to look different and I think it'll be unique for each course. So the teachers will certainly work with their students to make sure that they're well prepared and they know what to prepare for.
So Scott, the calendar on the bottom, I'm sure you're going to change to say revised. It will be August 25th. It'll, because that's how I keep track.
Any other, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so motion passes unanimously. Okay. Now we're on to 12.2, first reading of policy, policy 1510, school visitors, enclosment number 12.2.
Stephanie, do you want me to share this again and kind of walk everyone through it?
I think so, Stephanie.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
So this is a policy that we spoke with at the the policy committee. And basically this, right now, when you enter Ram High School or Ram Middle School, you're required to press the buzzer and someone will buzz you in. There's a second entrance that you'll need to buzz yourself through. And then you report to the office, you sign in, and you receive a generic visitor's pass. Most schools, any of you that have gone into any number of different schools, I know that Hebron Elementary is, uses the system that I'm going to be talking about here, is the fact that most schools now require a, an additional level of security for anyone coming into the building. And that involves usually the use of some form of electronic device that does a deeper kind of dive into each individual entering the building. So we've purchased the Raptor system, which has nothing to do with the Ram Raptors. It's the name of the system itself. Hebron uses the same system. And when an individual enters the building or enters the office, in addition to sign in, they need to identify themselves with a picture ID, which is fed through a scanning device. It produces a unique ID tag for that person with their picture on it. But it also does a background check on the individual. So, and this is why we need to update the board policy in particular because we are, any visitor coming into the building, whether they be a parent, whether they be a vendor, they would need to go through this. And included on the background check that it looks at is the Connecticut Sex Offender Registry. So if you look at the policy, that's the, in red here, that's the most significant addition. There's also included in your packet the administrative regulations. And there, the biggest changes are, rather than simply coming in and signing in and out of the building, upon arrival, all visitors must report directly to the main office. They must provide photo identification. If photo identification is not available, some form of identification will be required. A background checked on the Connecticut Sex Offender Registry will be completed. So this is requiring an additional step that we don't currently have, but it certainly is designed to enhance safety of students with whoever comes into the building. And then anyone who enters the building, they will have a visitor's badge, which again will be unique to them and have their, an ID with their picture on it. So that allows us to know that that person has gone through the process. So this is really the first reading, so it's a chance for each of you to have the policy to take a look at. We won't be voting on it until the November meeting.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Scott, I just had a quick one. Is the background check strictly the Connecticut Sex Offender Registry or is there other stuff that is also looked at?
I believe that is the only one, Scott Butson. Do you know if there's additional checks that it does?
Hi, it's Scott. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, no, I believe it's just the Connecticut Sex Offender Registry that it looks at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so this goes back to policy, correct?
Yeah, so this this will come back again next in November. And policy certainly look at it again, but without any suggestions from the rest of the board, then it'll likely come back as as written. But certainly if anyone in looking at it has any questions on it, you know, forward those to any member of the policy subcommittee. So they can look at it at their next meeting.
Which has been rescheduled to the 29th.
Right.
I do have one more quick question. Sorry, Scott. It's just reading somewhere if there is a result received from the background check from the Connecticut Sex Offender Registry access may be denied. Are you provided with legal guidance on who should be allowed or who should not be allowed? Is that something that you're?
Yes.
Received.
Absolutely. Yep. And that would be an administrator, then it gets involved at that point.
Okay, so there's some sort of guidelines for?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're not simply told, hey, you don't pass most.
Oh, you can't. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, um, we'll go on to 12.3 financials.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So as 12.3, we're going to start with the budget appropriation transfers. So these are going to require board action. There are 10 transactions or transfers that occurred. And the grand total for them is 132,372 dollars and 76 cents. If you would like me to review them, please let me know. Otherwise, I'm glad to answer any questions that the board may have before you take a motion on these.
Does anyone have any questions for Eva? Okay, so Eva, you're looking for a motion to?
I'm looking for a motion to hopefully approve the grand total of the transfers as presented for 132,372 dollars and 76 cents.
Eva, what was the total again?
Of 132,372 dollars and 76 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers of 132,372 dollars and 76 cents.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And now if you look at 12.3B, this is the net projections. So I'm going to review that. I just want to make sure I grabbed this all. Okay. So, um, after reviewing the month of September 30th, there is a positive or favorable net position of 76,040 dollars. We still have a couple of vacancies. One vacancy is in the process of hiring, so that's still moving forward. And then I believe we're reshuffling or trying to fill the .6 school psychologist position. So those are positive moves that will be going forward. The official enrollment date for the state of Connecticut was October 1st. So right now the magnet schools are providing us with their invoices for all our students who are going to magnet schools. And so we will be incoming and getting those shortly. People Services is monitoring their IEPs and any changes that come along with the IEPs. And there looks like there might be some positive movement in our direction. In in accordance, the state of Connecticut is also requiring agreements for students that are placed out of district. So we're trying to get those finalized contracts or agreements between ourselves and the receiving school. So we're waiting for those to be finalized. Your capital improvement fund is currently focusing on invoices and processing of payments for work that has been completed. Likewise, your capital nonrecurring. The the major job that is outstanding is the DOT project and the contingency that hopefully we can negotiate down a little bit with the help of Mr. Tierney and Mr. Leslie. And those are the highlights for this month. Are there any questions that the board might like answered?
If the DOT is not negotiated down, do we have enough money in there to cover the proposed bill?
Yes, we do.
Any other questions? No, I'm not hearing any at this time.
Okay, so if we go to 12.3C, which is your middle school and high school student activity reports. Again, this is a new format that we instituted for this fiscal year. It's a little bit easier to read. Or at least in my opinion, hopefully in yours also. So it all balances with the bank statements. So hopefully if no one has any questions, this would be good to go. Are there any questions on this one?
No questions?
Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to 12.3D, which is the food service monthly sales and expenditure report. We are currently running the seamless summer operation. This has been extended to December 31st. But after writing this memo, it looks like it might be extended till June 30th of 2021. We, Mr. Leslie, myself and Whitsons are going to sit down on Wednesday to discuss the implications of if we so choose to continue this up seamless summer operation to see the ramifications on the food service program. Currently, everybody eats for free. So we rely on the grant reimbursement for the meals served. So the more children that eat, the more money we receive. Every school district in the state of Connecticut is dealing with this currently, and many people are worried for participation rates and the reimbursement that they're going to be receiving. We have positive news because we've instituted a Google form for our distance learning families and or community members to be able to pre-order meals. We are seeing a rise in the population of people who want to be served and fed. So I'm hoping that'll be good news for us, but we'll get more information for the next board meeting for you. Again, our balance matches what is in the bank. So are there any questions at this time?
Have you gotten reimbursed from the state for any of the meals so far?
Um, I had put in a claim at the end of, so at the beginning of October, you have to put in a claim for what was served in September. And we're just waiting for the money. And that was about, I believe, $9,000. It's in that that. But we're hoping with more rate with more people eating, we'll get more money. So hopefully that'll work out.
So you want people to take advantage of this, then?
We do.
Okay. And I still make my son bring lunch sometimes, but now I'll just tell him to buy every day.
There you go. Breakfast and lunch.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Eva? All right, Eva, that was the that was the end of that, right?
Yes.
The whole financials. Okay. I want to make sure I wasn't missing anything. Thank you very much. All right, so we're on to number 13, reports from the subcommittees. Facilities, Safety, Transportation. Rob?
Yeah, so we had a an onsite meeting. I forget the date. I'll be completely honest. We were there. We met with Rich Colarco, Mike Swahaffer, Mike Popovich, Scott Leslie, and Eva was there. We walked around the comp field and then we went up to the baseball field and we had a good conversation. They are getting quotes for a sand injection, which is Mr. Popovich and Mr. Colarco's recommendation to start with the comp field. Planning on having those quotes ready for the facilities subcommittee on October 29th. So we should have all the information, hopefully bring it to our November meeting. We also approved Rich Colarco to do stand pipe in the baseball field to better monitor the water levels.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Finance Audit Compliance and Insurance.
We didn't meet. I don't Jessica, right? We didn't meet. Correct.
All right, policy. We met to discuss the the Raptor system that's going in, basically what we talked about this evening. So you've pretty much were at the policy meeting for that. Program Communication.
We did not.
Okay. And DOT Traffic, Grant?
I don't think we've met since the project has been going.
Okay, I believe I I skipped negotiations, which is a really important one right now. So negotiations.
Scott, do you want to update everybody? Scott, we have met twice so far.
Sure, we're actually going to be following up with the entire board following executive session with a non-meeting to to share a tentative agreement that the negotiating committee has with the REA. So that'll happen following the session tonight.
And I think that as much as we can share now in public session.
Judy, you're really breaking up. I don't know if it's me.
No, I said that as much as we can share right now.
Judy, can you do that again? Right.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I think I got them all now. Facilities, Management. Judy, do you want to share anything with East Con or CAPE?
Um, well, CAPE is sending everybody their participation in various CAPE workshops. So if you should be getting that from the school if you haven't already gotten that. I think Scott's office is sending that out. And then, um, East Con is celebrating.
What?
East Con is celebrating 40 years and they are they just put out a celebratory accomplishment based colored flyer. So it's I I can see if I can get that email to everyone. I will try to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. All right, we are on to public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, I'm hearing none. All right, number 15, informational items. The calendar of events and student discipline reports are included. Scott, did you want to talk about that at all?
Sure. You know, obviously, our our calendar of events is significantly modified from what we would typically be looking at. We did, we were able to get student pictures in and staff pictures in. So there there is some normalcy. You know, we are able to hold our athletic contests and we have limited spectators. But fortunately, I think most parents who want to attend are able to attend those. But by and large, unfortunately, our calendar of events is is nowhere near as rich as we would hope it to be. You know, one of the if there's a silver lining, and I'm almost hesitant to even call this a silver lining, but certainly one of the impacts that our whole new reality has presented us with is that if you look at the discipline records, they've they've essentially evaporated any discipline issues. So our students, we we've we've shown if we only have a handful of students in the building at one time, they're going to do fantastic. And they are doing fantastic. But some of those challenges that are, you know, so typical to middle school and a high school just simply aren't aren't there with us at this point. So we're able to give our students full attention in all those positive areas that we much prefer doing so. And I think their record reflects that.
Great. Any questions for Scott?
I just had a quick comment. My I wanted to say that the administration and school counselors did a great job doing the virtual college fair. I know my son got a ton out of it, so it was greatly appreciated and and just at least allowed them to speak to some of speak and and learn a little bit more about what what some of the colleges are expecting of them with the changes too, and answer some of the questions about SATs and COVID and and what might look different for them as they're applying. So that was really nicely done.
Thank you, Jess. Anyone else? Okay, at this point, we're going to be going into executive session. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go in executive session.
Second?
Jessica, a second?
All in favor, we'll do an aye.
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 Okay, so it's 7:38 going into executive session. We'll be logging off the public and going into the executive session link. Okay? All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Scott, I'll I'll text you when we're ready to to come out. It should be pretty short.
Okay, do you need me to let people in, though?
Uh, yes, we will. I will.
Yeah.
Okay. Mary, do you know what to do with this second link?
You know what? I was just going to ask. I'm not sure I got any other links.